Team, are we about ready to get started? Or do you need another minute? Okay. Ms. Sunshine. All right, well, go ahead and call to order the Gilbert Town Council meeting for Tuesday, March 7th, 2023. I would ask you all to please turn off your cellphones or silence them. Councilmember Torgerson. And first this evening, we will have our invocation led by President Kevin Ballard of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Ms. President Ballard, oh, there you are. Good evening. Thanks for joining us this evening. Just push the button on the microphone. Thank you.
Our beloved Father in Heaven, we are grateful to gather in this goodly land, thankful that this land allows us to assemble as we choose, exercise choice and agency. We're thankful for those here in this meeting and those that assist in the running of the town of Gilbert. We're grateful for them and pray for them as they choose wisely the direction we should We ask, Father in Heaven, that the proceedings of this meeting will be in harmony with Thy mind and will, that there can be peace, understanding, and a good give and take. We're thankful, Father, for the wonderful citizens of Gilbert and the kind acts that are reported on and that go unreported, but to Thee all things are known. We pray for those that are less fortunate, and may we look beyond ourselves and help others where possible. We commend this meeting to Thee now in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, President Ballard. Actually missed presentation of Student of the Month. Vice Mayor, are you ready to do that? Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I had to get my stepstool so I can touch the ground back here. Good evening. I'm Vice Mayor Tilke, and it is my pleasure to announce the names of the Gilbert Student Citizens of the Month. The recipients were nominated by their teachers and principals for demonstrating good citizenship and character. We appreciate the opportunity to not only recognize these hardworking students, but to also thank all the teachers and school administrators in the community. We appreciate all your efforts to educate and influence our young residents. Our schools are some of Gilbert's greatest assets. At this time, we're going to begin our Student Citizen of the Month presentation. Please enjoy. For those of you who are receiving an award tonight, a certificate and packet will be delivered to your schools. So we're going to begin with our elementary schools. Ashland Ranch Elementary, Addison Krill; Bridges Elementary, Kennedy Richardson; Burke Elementary, Declan Floyd; Carroll Ray Ranch Elementary, Jaslyn Karabes; Chaparral Elementary, Grady Goacher; Charlotte Patterson Elementary, Ryder Denham; Christ Greenfield School, Weston Legg; EduPrize School, Lila Meyerhofer. I do practice these, and then when I see them, I always go, what? What is it? Gateway Point Elementary, June Bradford; Higley Traditional Academy, Ragnar Story; Islands Elementary, Piper Becker; Leading Edge Academy, Kaylee Parker; Mesquite Elementary, Maya Mankey; Neely Traditional Academy, Emmett Waldo; Oak Tree Elementary, Christian Montemeyer; Pioneer Elementary, Catherine McRavie; Playa del Rey Elementary, Haley Long; Power Ranch Elementary, Jacob Delchi; Quartz Hill Elementary, Peyton Dahl; Santana Elementary, Kaseon Kennedy; Settlers Point Elementary, Everly Frederickson; Town Meadows Elementary, Jet Clausen; Valvista Lakes Elementary, Sophia Kaufman; Weinberg Gifted Academy, Sahir Nanwall; American Leadership Academy, Nio Do Hughes; Campbell Verdy High School, Feliciano Malloy; Canyon Valley High School, Derek Beavers; Cooley Middle School, Brecklin Bolts; Gilbert Classical Academy, Serena Botnager; Gilbert High School, Helena Stewart; Greenfield Junior High, Russell Scott; Higley High School, Emma Frank; Mesquite Junior High, Michaela Rodriguez; South Valley Junior High, Maya Suezy. And that is it. Yes. Thank you. And just a word of congratulations to all of the students, and I am going to continue to be better at saying some of those names. And it's so important that I say them right, and I hope I got by it, so thank you.
I will tell you, when they're here in person, they have no qualms about telling you if you're wrong. But you haven't had the opportunity to experience that yet. I hope we can bring them back in person in the fall. Next up, we will have our Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Torgerson. Now, if I could please ask Town Clerk Herrera to do the roll call.
Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kathy Tilke.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chuck Bon Giovanni.
Here.
Councilmember Bobby Buckley.
Here.
Councilmember Jan Kaprowski.
Here.
And Councilmember Jim Torgerson. A quorum is present.
Thank you so much, Chevelli. I will now make my way down to the floor for a couple of proclamations, presentations. First this evening, we have a proclamation for American Red Cross Month, and if I could invite Jim Galoon up here to join me. Good evening, Jim. So nice to see you. Go ahead and read this proclamation. Whereas caring for one another is an essential act of humanity and should remain at the heart of our community and the simple acts of kindness by the Red Cross, provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments while continuing the legacy of Clara Barton, the founder of the organization more than 140 years ago, to prevent and alleviate human suffering. And whereas 90% of the American Red Cross boots on the ground are made up of volunteers, and whereas volunteerism and generosity are critical to a community's resilience and the American Red Cross efforts embody and honor Clara Barton's noble words of, "You must never so much think as whether you like it or not, you must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." And whereas the Red Cross commitment to lending a helping hand in times of need embody and honor Clara Barton's legacy and mission of compassion and humanity. And whereas during American Red Cross Month, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit found in Gilbert, Arizona, and reaffirm our commitment to helping ensure no one faces a crisis alone. And whereas the Gilbert Water Tower will be illuminated red on the evening of March 11th, 2023, in support of the American Red Cross Month. And now therefore, I, Bridget Peterson, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as American Red Cross Month, and I encourage Gilbert citizens to honor and recognize the humanitarian efforts of the American Red Cross, who inspire each of us to engage in our community, state, and world with humility and humanity in mind. Would you like to say a few words, Jim?
Yeah, just thank you so much for your support, Mayor, and the city of Gilbert. Like you mentioned about the volunteers, 90% of our workforce are volunteers. They volunteer their time, and they leave their family to help others throughout the country, and we do have several volunteers living in Gilbert here, too. So give them a big round of applause for all their help. Thank you.
Let's get a photo.
I'm going to give you this. This is our regional pin.
Oh, thank you so much.
So you can wear that proudly.
Oh, thank you so much. Let's open this up. She's going to scoot us over in front of the middle of the dais.
Thank you, and this is for you. Thanks so much. Nice to meet you.
Next up, we are recognizing the participants in the Gilbert Feeding Families Food Drive for 2023. I'm going to list everybody that participated in the drive, and anyone that's here present, I would love to invite you down here to join me. Oak Tree Elementary, Mesquite High, the Higley Unified School District, Santana Elementary, Power Ranch Elementary, Chaparral Elementary, Close Cabin, Majestic Gilbert Eight, Texas Roadhouse, Buenos Pizza, Lou Melnati's Pizza, Evident Life Church, Living Word Bible Church, Saint Anne Roman Catholic Church in Gilbert Steak, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints Chandler East Steak, Gateway Steak, Greenfield Steak, Highland East Steak, Highland West Steak, Santana Steak, Stapley Steak, Valvista Steak. I see a pattern here. First United Methodist partnered with Resurrection Episcopal, Higley Steak, Redemption Church, Seville Steak, Spirit of Joy partnered with Williams Field Steak, Sun Valley Christian Church, Superstition Springs Steak. And our coordinators, if they're here, Rachel Hickson, Fran Louder, and Amy Keller. And a big shout out to Becca Gilbert and Melissa Nelson, I'm still not used to saying Nelson, from the United Food Bank. Can we please give them all a huge round of applause?
We have certificates for everybody, but there's no way we're going to pass out later.
Okay.
And then they have a little thank you prize gift.
And do we have a total for our community-wide food bank? We do have a total? We had 29 drop-off donation sites. We had 30,537 pounds of food, $20,424 in cash donations collected. This provides 127,568 meals to those in need. Big round of applause. We have certificates for all of you, and we're going to pass those out at the end, but we would love to get a big group photo with everybody. Uh-oh, that's somebody's phone. Oh, no. Run. Sounds like a fire alarm. We're not on fire, I promise. Okay, we're going to need to do like a couple of lines and merge together everybody, shorter people in the front. I get that because I'm short. Yep.
It was so nice to run into the volunteers.
Our food banks are really low at the moment, so that was very helpful to be able to provide food for those in need at this point in time. And I was really blown away by the dollar number of contributions that were made, and not just food that was donated, so that's just amazing. And I thank everybody for taking time out and for opening their hearts to be able to donate to this great cause that we do every single year. So be watching for another drive about a year from now. It is an annual event here in Gilbert. Next up on our agenda, we have our communications from citizens. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I've asked permission if I could give my council update early in the evening, just so everybody will still be tuning in to hear that. We held our first town hall from our communications subcommittee today, and I just wanted to remind everybody that Councilmember Bon Giovanni will be hosting a town hall here in town hall tomorrow at 6:00 PM. And Councilmember Kaprowski will be hosting her town hall down at Power Ranch on Saturday at 9:30. So we've spread it out hopefully to where, if you'd like to come and talk to us about communications and how we can communicate with you better, these are open to the public, and just wanted to remind everybody. So thanks for allowing me to get on early in the evening. With that, we'll move on to communications from citizens. And I'll just read a statement about protocol for receiving communications from citizens. The Gilbert Town Council values citizen comments and input. Anyone wishing to speak before the council must fill out a request to speak card for each item they wish to speak on and submit it prior to the beginning of the meeting. The communications from citizens portion on the agenda provides citizens an opportunity to identify for the town council matters of interest or concern related to town government that are not on the printed agenda. Under the provisions of the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the town council is prohibited from responding to issues that have not been properly noticed. Therefore, the town council may only listen to citizens who wish to address them on non-agenda items. At the conclusion of the open call to public, response is limited to individual members of the council responding to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, asking staff to review a matter, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. When your name is called, please come forward to the podium, state your name and place a residence, and then begin speaking. All speakers are expected to observe common standards of decorum and courtesy. Personal attacks, political speeches, or threats of political action are inappropriate in this forum and will be grounds for ending a speaker's time at the podium. So you'll have three minutes, and you'll see the clock that will be on the monitor in front of you. And so if you'll just come forward and state your name and place a residence, and we will start with James Devery and followed by Jennifer Turner. James? Oh, there you are.
Hi, my name is.
James, you need to push the button on the mic, and it'll light up. There you go.
There we go. We're good. Okay. Hi, my name is James Devery. I'm here again as a concerned father. I would like to start off by saying thank you to Jim Torgensen and Chuck Bon Giovanni for hearing us. I've spoken a couple times with other neighbors about a behavioral home in our neighborhood that we believe is an unethical business opportunity for somebody to take advantage of us. So these two gentlemen, they've spoken with us, they've heard us, and they're trying to help us solve the problem. So my neighbor Casey will discuss a little bit more in detail where we are since we last spoke in November, but I'm asking more of the council to come to the table and talk to us. We were told in November that, I forget the terminology, but there was, I believe, going to be a special session or study conducted to help create safe neighborhoods from this type of issue. So we're here to ask for additional leadership to step up and come to the table and have the conversations with us so we can grow as a community and not just through unethical business people taking advantage of our children's playgrounds. So again, it's a massive issue. It has not stopped, and it needs to stop. So we're asking for your support, so please come to the table and have the conversation with us before there's going to be something drastic that happens to somebody in the community. Casey will discuss, again, the police reports. It's not good, so closing your eyes is not going to work. So please come and talk to us. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Next is Jennifer Turner, and following Jennifer will be Casey Kendall.
Is that it? Okay. Hi, I'm Jennifer Turner. I live in a county island in Gilbert, and I am here to talk about STO 990, but not Item 9. I'm not here to talk about the budget. I'm here to talk about the design. I'm here actually to speak on behalf of the Ocatillo residents. STO 990, for those that may not know, is the widening of Ocatillo between 148th and Greenfield. There are a lot of concerned citizens there, a lot of concerned residents. I'm also here to represent Terry Natty, who could not be here today. She's usually here. She just could not be here tonight and ask for representation. So I do live in the neighborhood there. Terry actually had dropped off a packet on February 21st here to town hall for each of the council members. Councilmembers. And in that is a packet which looks intimidating, but it's not. It's merely a response to a 58-page slideshow that was presented to the council. So each page is just a slide and comments thereof, or maybe two slides and comments thereof. So it looks a little big and clunky, but it's not. It's a quick read. She's hoping that you did get it and that you did have a chance to read it and read through the information there. The concern is that staff has provided information that is inaccurate. It's been fact-checked. It's fact-checked here by the neighborhood and by Terry herself. We all come together on this. The design originally was for 50-foot, then 55-foot, then 60-foot, then 65-foot. And therefore, because the design has changed over time, we feel that it could change to something more efficient, more cost-effective. We're not saying don't widen Ocatillo. We're merely saying, listen to us and the residents there of what we would like to have. In my very fast time running from me, I'd like to talk about PR, safety and crime, and heart. There is some. There is some bad PR for Gilbert, for the town and for the staff. The vocal level item, that's an AZ family. For those that don't know it, it's out there. Take a look at it. It's bad PR. Good PR would be listening to this neighborhood and, and hearing what they have to say. Safety and crime, the added traffic does add crime. It does. It does add crime. There is also a shared trail there meant for horses and I'm an experienced horse rider of many decades and I wouldn't ride my safest horse next to a five-lane highway, basically. Heart, my nine minutes left. Gilbert had heart. Gilbert has heart. Gilbert could use heart here and get good PR.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next up is Casey Kendall.
Good evening, staff, council, mayor. In November of 2020, my neighbors and I introduced a recovery house to the last council that's causing absolute chaos in our neighborhood. At that time, we shared details of two different sex offenders being shuffled between two different properties with the same business owner along numerous incidents and police reports involving aggravated assault, threats of suicide, warrants being served, a mutual combat knife fight, gang-related graffiti, and complete destruction of our community park with the removal of bushes and shrubs so that patients can no longer hide drugs and alcohol. All of this happening directly next to our community park with two Gilbert Public School stops that have been moved after we notified them. Since the introduction in November, these incidents have not stopped or even slowed with an average of five, five police interactions a month, roughly one a week. These include criminal damage, animal welfare with a dog being locked in a car all day, and indecent exposure. Indecent exposure. That's just to name the few. Remember, we have two Level III sex offenders being shuffled between properties. This is next to our park and two school bus stops. I'd like to thank Councilmember Torgerson and Councilmember Bon Giovanni for their time and support over the last three to four months with this issue. At the time of introduction, the council agreed to do an executive session on this issue. I'm here to remind the council of that commitment and the impact of these unregulated homes and businesses on our community. Our park is unusable. Intoxicated individuals roam our streets with open bottles of alcohol. We believe in recovery. We believe in patients' rights and everyone should have the right to recover safely in a controlled environment under special care of a dedicated professional, not the care of a greedy business owner looking to make a cheap buck off the misfortune of others, taking advantage of access and other state and federal programs at the expense of the taxpayer. Recovery is a right for everyone, but it's not a right at the expense of my town, my community, or my children. The effect on actual patients seeking help is nonexistent with most roaming the streets all hours of the day with no supervision. Arizona Admin Code, Arizona ARS Code, and Gilbert Code are extremely clear on these issues. The residential facility must provide the resident with the least restrictive environment that meets the resident's treatments' needs. This chaos does not meet those needs. The only code that the town of Gilbert is enforcing is the 1,200-foot mark in between these homes. I ask again for the attention of the council in this matter and for the town of Gilbert to enforce the codes as it pertains to the business and houses and the future success of our town and community. I will also offer my information, my research, and my experience during that session. Please enforce our codes. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Mayor, if I may, Patrick, could we put this on an agenda? It was my understanding that-
Excuse me, Vice Mayor. Could we get that direction just after all the communications are done?
That was it. I'm sorry, that was it.
Well, that's it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for reminding me. I should have mentioned that.
Last speaker.
It was my understanding that there was going to be an internal group and that Councilmember Bon Giovanni was going to lend his expertise, but maybe if we could get an update on a, on a agenda coming up soon.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, yes, we actually have been working on that internally and plan on bringing something back to council in April.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for communications from citizens. Now, if you'd like to move into the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor. We have one item that's been requested to pull and that is item seven by Councilmember Torgerson. With that, I would also like to bring item number 17 forward. Should I read all the numbers and then add that?
Can I ask a follow-up question? Councilmember Torgerson, are you pulling seven A and B? It's two parts.
Seven A.
Seven A. So Vice Mayor, you could include seven B in your count if you want to do a motion for the consent.
Okay. Is that what you were looking for? Okay.
That'd be easier.
Right. So I'd like to make a motion to approve consent items number three, four, five, six, seven B, eight, nine, 10, 11, A. Is that right? Oh, no. Yes, we had an 11A. Okay. 12, 13, and 17, inserting the names of the appointed members of the IDA, Kevin DeRosa, Robert Elmer, and Brett Thorpe.
We have a motion. Can we have a second?
So moved.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Tilke, seconded by Councilmember Kaprowski. Please vote. It lit up. You're good. Motion passes seven zero.
Item seven A, Councilmember Torgerson.
It's just, it's more for edification, but as we're doing a study for lead and copper compliance, it's, I would like to know why this is, lead and copper is becoming a problem that we have to comply with. It is because of, it was mentioned to me, hydrofluoric, hydrofluoric, I can't even pronounce it properly, hydrofluoric acid. It's a byproduct of a fertilizer that's being used. Is that why we're seeing lead and copper problems that we have to do this kind of study for?
Please.
Is that working? Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Rebecca Hamel. I'm the town's water manager. So this contract before you tonight is in response to revisions to the EPA's lead and copper rule and new regulations that were required to follow by 2024. Currently, under the existing lead and copper rule, we, we do sampling periodically in our customers' homes to check for leaching of lead from premise plumbing because that's the primary source of lead contamination in drinking water. And we maintain pH control at our two water treatment plants for corrosion control.
So does it have anything to do with what I had mentioned?
No, there, the hydrofluoric acid fluoride is added to the drinking water by voter mandate and is not a water treatment chemical.
Does that answer your question? Okay. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
So we have item seven A that needs a motion. Anyone like to?
I move.
Motion by Councilmember Torgerson for seven A. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Torgerson, seconded by Vice Mayor. Tilke, could we please vote? Motion passes seven, oh, I haven't, it's still voted. Sorry. I jumped to the gun on that one. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Fluoride was added to the water by voter approval and now we have to deal with the after effects of that. And it is expensive to do. Thank you, Vice Mayor. We are moving on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Items will be heard at one public hearing, at which time anyone wishing to comment on the public hearing item may do so. We have a couple of items that people would like to speak on. Item 14 is a liquor license and I don't think anyone has any issues with that. What about item 16? Does anyone want to have a presentation? You just need a brief one. Okay. So then can, I will open the public hearing and close the public hearing on item 14. Would somebody like to make a motion on that, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second? Motion by Vice Mayor Tilke, seconded by Councilmember Torgerson. Please vote. Motion passes seven zero. Now we will move on to item 15 on our agenda. We have 15, we have 15, 15A and 15B. I'll open the public hearing on all three of those and I would suggest that we go to public comment first and then bring the conversation back to the dais, if that's okay with everybody? Yes. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would just like to read that we have two request to speak cards, but they do not wish to speak, however, they are against item number 15 and 15B, and that is Virginia Morrison. We have two speakers for 15 and then two for 15A. So I'll just start with 15 if that's all right. So again, I'll call your name. You'll have three minutes, which will show up on the monitor. Just a reminder to turn on the microphone. If the, if the red light's on, you'll know that you're hot mic up there. So first up is Maureen Hop and then following Bruce Leventon.
Good evening, everyone. So I just wanted to kind of reiterate where we all are as a community. The citizens of Gilbert rule this town. You were all elected to represent the citizens and make decisions on what's in the best interest of our town. Employees of the town do not run the council. Do your jobs, do what you were all elected to do. Elections do have consequences and we see that twice a month. Our elected council is only as good as the candidates we choose from. This current council consists of a non-speaker, another who has no clue whether the lights are on or off in this building, the inside joke comedian, the town's personal PR professional, the school marm, and another who looks like you're just sitting here wasting your time. This is not about each of you individually. This is not about your personal and professional agendas. This is about my town, Gilbert, Arizona. How many times is this rail issue going to be brought forth before you? When will you all ax it once and for all? Enough. Stop gaslighting, stop your conning and manipulating. The power of this topic should always be a vote by the people. Spending money on feasibility studies, spending money discussing this, yet again, has to stop. Spending money in this economic downturn is not warranted or welcomed. This sideshow Bob routine is getting old. Gilbert does not want rail. We never have. I'm imploring all of you to vote to stop any and all rail coming through Gilbert and stop spending a dime again discussing this topic. Give the power to the people and let us vote and decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Next up is Bruce Leventon and following, that will be Virginia Morrison.
Good evening, Mayor, board members. I'm a town of Gilbert resident, Bruce Levich. I've been here 21 years. I choose to live in Gilbert because of the quality of life. I'm not speaking here tonight as a lobbyist or a special interest group. I'm retired from the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office 24 years and I did boots on the ground in Phoenix with the light rail. I'll tell you everything that you will never hear on Channel 15 or the local newspaper. It's a cesspool. It's a waste of taxpayer money. It's a burden on our police, our fire, and ambulance. If you, you know, I chose to live here in Gilbert. I don't want to have Gilbert turn into a Phoenix or a Chandler or a Tempe. I love where I live and all you folks are fiduciaries of our beautiful town. I would rather have that money spent on police or parks or rehab instead of this waste of money. I've seen it for 11 years. It's crime-infested. It only brings the homeless from point A to point B and burglars. You don't want it. It ruins businesses. It ruins established neighborhoods. I've been there. I'm retired now four years. Thank God. How many fights I was in protecting the light rail. It's a waste of money. I hope you postpone this vote tonight on the light rail. It's a big, big mistake. All right? I haven't heard anybody, I, this is the first time I spoke before the board here and I've lived here 21 years and it got me out of the house because I was so angered that this has not been dropped. I have never heard anybody with boots-on-the-ground experience speak to this board that worked on the light rail and knows what the heck goes on with the light rail. I don't want my property values devalued. I don't want our poor fire and police spending tons of time with these light rail undesirables. And you can give them a ticket, but you can't get blood from a stone. They have no money. They don't care. They don't care about the rule of law. So to get me out of the house, to speak to you and being a resident here and a taxpayer for 21 years is darn important. So I'm coming from a different perspective and if you're interested, you have my name and my email. I'd love to speak with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bruce. Next up on item number 15A is Virginia Morrison and following Virginia, Bruce, were you wanting to speak twice?
No.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Virginia, there you go. And you might want to pull the mic down towards you, Virginia. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, staff. Thank you for the opportunity to voice citizens' opinion. My name is Virginia Morrison. I live at 932 East Stanford Avenue. I'm speaking against public hearing item number 15A on your, on tonight's agenda. Insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. This insanity has built more freeways to alleviate congestion and commuter gridlock and where are we now? The same results, just more of it. With this proposed code, 15A, we continue to lock ourselves into the same insanity. To restrict, restrict town staff's time, funds, and anything of value to study, construct, and any light rail or commuter rail stations keeps us in the same insanity. It prohibits the town from making any informed decisions about town-owned land near existing lines. This ties the hands of the town to fully study all options. We know the phenomenal growth in the town of Gilbert. It's doubled its population every five years from 1980 to 2000. In 2030, Gilbert's expected build-out is anticipated to be over 300,000 residents and an ever-increasing commuter population. Now is the time to plan, not to tie the hands of experts in the field. Past councils have recognized the importance of looking at all options and planning ahead. We now benefit from that planning with express commuter buses to- We now benefit from that planning with express commuter buses to Phoenix, reducing commuter time from 45 minutes to an hour to 30 minutes in traffic. This took planning, vision, and a willingness to look at all options. I know that each one of you on the council are visionaries. You wouldn't be where you are on the dais without being a visionary. You envisioned yourself there. You are a leader in our community because you have a desire to be impactful to Gilbert and its residents, to leave a legacy through courage, vision, and leading-edge thinking, keeping an open mind, and not clinging to insanity. So as a private citizen, to one of many that believes we have to look at options other than courage.
Thank you very much, Virginia. Mayor, that is it for our public comments.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you very much, Virginia. Thank you, Bruce, for your service. Thank you for that, and thank you, Maureen, for speaking this evening. We appreciate you coming out to share your thoughts on this topic. I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais for discussion. We have three items in front of us, 15, 15A, and 15B. I will, I will start with just a few comments on the comments that were made by our residents. I appreciate the passion and, and you coming out, coming out of your house to be here this evening. No matter what we do at this level at the town council, we will not be able to stop commuter rail potentially from coming through Gilbert. The rail lines are owned by a private entity, and if an outside company such as Amtrak chooses to bring commuter rail on those lines, the town of Gilbert will not have a say one way or the other. We will be able to participate in conversations if we make the right decisions this evening. We will be able to plan for the future, as was mentioned. We will be able to decide what is best for our community should the commuter rail decide to come through our town using the rail lines that are already here in place. That's just a given. I don't want anyone to think that anything that we do tonight could potentially stop the commuter rail from coming to Gilbert because it really can't. All it will stop potentially, depending on what and if we vote on something, is if the town of Gilbert provides any funding for the commuter rail. So I just wanted to be clear about that. Bruce, we have no intentions of bringing light rail to Gilbert. We haven't had any intention of bringing any light rail to Gilbert. It's never been part of our plan, and we keep going round and round with this, but it is not part of our plan for Gilbert to bring light rail into this community. I don't think it's the right fit for Gilbert. It fits in the cities that it's in. It is not going to make its way all the way down here from Main Street to the town of Gilbert. So you can be assured that I have no intention of ever letting light rail come to Gilbert as long as I am part of this council or planning this community in any way. I submitted the first ordinance this evening because I allow, I, I believe that it allows the public to have a voice and for transparency into the future of any potential commuter rail in Gilbert. It lowers all substantial liability and ensures that the public is in control of fees or taxes specifically for rail. It does not impede the public, this council and town staff, from being involved in discussions should commuter rail ever move forward, and it does not jeopardize the development agreement that we have with Cooley Station. Breaking a development agreement could cost us more than money. It costs us our reputation as a town that we're open to business and responsible for contracts that we pass, and we stand by those agreements. Commuter rail may never come through Gilbert, but the other ordinances could open us up to a costly lawsuit if we pass this, pass those versions, and I'm concerned about that. It was mentioned that we have a fiduciary responsibility to this community, and we do. That's an irresponsible counter to something that may never happen. I purposely separated out a fee and a tax after I did some research and learned that a city or a town can, in fact, create a new tax for a service if they are not a charter city. Gilbert is not a charter city, so we could create a new tax without a referendum to our voters. Hence why I added two separate entries into the ordinance that I put on the agenda for this evening. One that would not allow us to assess a new fee for light rail or commuter rail, and one would, that would not allow us to pass a tax for light rail or commuter rail without a referendum to the voters. So the voters have complete control over that. I'd like to open it up to any more comments or questions, and if you want to comment on anyone or all of them, or just start with 15, it's up to you. Councilmember Torgason?
I'll start with 15A. I separated out light rail because I heard every single person up here say they were against light rail. And I did it so that we could have at least one piece of clarity. If everybody's truly against that, then we don't allow staff to push that agenda forward whatsoever. We just stop it right now. That can always be undone in the future by four council people if they voted to do so, but at least we would be able to give people the assurance they're asking for it. And I participated in the light rail conversations over 25 years ago, and I'm very grateful it stopped at Gilbert Road on Main Street. I have a business on Main Street, and it's horrible. And as I watched the Mesa's State of the City address, they were joking that they were going to call Phoenix the suburbs in the future. They were going to urbanize so much. Well, I welcome that urbanization up there, but not here. So I wanted to make sure that that was separate and clean, so there was no, there was nothing about it that was tied into commuter rail. And I believe, Chris, that we had, we feel that we had done it cleanly, exactly as discussed on the dais the last meeting we have. We think, right? And then 15B was set aside so that we could still participate in the conversations because there's so many conversations regarding commuter rail that are around staff, there's different boards and commissions that they participate in, but that no expenses, outside expenses such as the study that was proposed earlier, any commitment of money would, would be done without the council doing it. And the reason I did that is so staff couldn't spend $50,000 doing a study, $20,000, $10,000, $5,000. It would, it would force transparency that four people up on this dais would have to vote to spend that money to do a study for commuter rail. And as far as the development agreement goes, I believe it's already been broken several times, and that, quite seriously, it says we may for commuter rail, for, for a transit station. It doesn't commit us to using commuter rails. So I feel that allowing it to be brought up for transparency purposes rather than just done through staff gives accountability to the four people up here, and we can take ownership of it if we vote or not so. I'll never vote for it, but if four members up here wish to vote for it, they can be held accountable by you. So this wasn't to put anything past you, it was actually to make sure that there was complete transparency, and everybody would have to be held accountable for their vote. Thanks for listening.
Any other comments? Councilmember Bonjivani?
So, like, how did we get here? You know, something that a lot of people don't know, and I didn't know it before I got on the council, is open meeting laws, which means that I can't give Young a call and talk to her about this issue, and then give Kathy a call, then the mayor the call, sorry, Vice Mayor, call Jim. I can't call, I can't speak to more than two people about this. So, you know, that's why I think we're here, because we have three different ordinances here that saying kind of different things, which is why I felt like we needed to separate the light rail from commuter rail. If we can't stop commuter rail, I am in favor of at least coming to the table, discussing what our options are. Light rail, on the other hand, everyone here, from what I can tell, almost everyone here has said on the dais at one time, light rail's not coming to Gilbert. We're not doing light rail. And the problem is, is there's so much confusion about what light rail is, what commuter rail is. That's why I believe we separated it, so we understand it. And I just want to respectfully challenge my fellow colleagues who said they won't have light rail in Gilbert to vote no to 15A, vote yes to 15, I'm sorry, vote no to 15 and vote yes to 15A. We need some clarity here. We're just, there's so many, so much information and disinformation out there. I personally felt, along with Councilmember Torgason and Councilmember Buckley, that we just, we needed to separate these issues. So if we've said on the dais there won't be any light rail, then why are we continuing to put it in here that says we can talk about it? The development contract from what I believe says and/or, light rail or commuter rail. Again, if we can't control commuter rail, I want a seat at the table, but I want us all to put back public trust for what is said on the dais. If you have said on the dais and said no light rail, then I believe you need to vote yes for 15A and no to 15. And maybe 15B, vote yes, so we could have a seat at the table. Unfortunately, it got to this, but I think these three different ordinances makes it a little bit more clearer to everyone out there because there is so much disinformation and misinformation out there about the two. So again, I encourage my colleagues to vote no to 15, vote yes to light rails, I mean, yes to eliminate light rail so we can never talk about it again on the dais, and then 15B, you know, I would hope that we would at least have a seat at the table, because I do agree with some of the people that have been talking about that. So again, the reason why we can't talk to each other is law. So that's why we're up here with three different ordinances, and I just wanted to make that clear, so, you know, we don't look like a kangaroo court up here, all trying to do all different ordinances. So that's it.
Any other comments? Councilmember Buckley?
Yeah, I, I want to just say that these two have said everything I would have said as well and that we've discussed. There's probably not anyone in here that knows my position on light rail or commuter rail. I was a little bit taken aback that, I don't know, maybe Amtrak is considered commuter rail. Am I wrong in that? Okay. So, I mean, I know that if Amtrak comes, I think the purpose of this is if they do come, there won't be any taxpayer money spent to build rail. They need to, if commuter rail comes here and they stop, they have to have a place to turn around. They're, they can't do that, as far as I'm aware right now. They can't, you know, they can't turn around if they need to make a stop and turn around and go back to Phoenix wherever they're going. So that would, to me, that means they need to build some rail in there to do that, to be able to make that area, wherever that might be, to turn around. But I, you know, I, I would urge to vote no on 15 and yes on A and B to, and that does take light rail completely off the table. Every, a lot of people and a lot, and sometimes I think we say light rail when we mean commuter rail, and then, then we won't have to have that issue anymore. I mean, if it's not coming, it's not coming. And we can, we can vote that way and then vote for 15B so that we will have the options that Jim and Chuck were talking about. We, it gives us an option to vote again if we, what we want to do and, right? Yeah. Yeah. So that's, that's where I am on this, and, and I, I think it's, it's the only option that we have right now is to vote yes on, on A and B and, and give everybody a voice.
Councilmember Kaprowski?
I appreciate the discussion that's been had and the conversation and the public that has come to speak today. I do think that it's a bit unfortunate that we're at this point of using ordinances as a tool, because I do feel that our current processes and procedures would allow us to have, make decisions on rail, any issues, any major issues would come to council and require our direction and approval. It doesn't require the ordinance to be in place for that to already happen. We, we cannot, the town right now could not go out and do a transit study without that coming back to council and getting, or having discussion and approval. And so I think that we're trying to pull on strings to make something happen, but I, I feel the ordinance is like, is the wrong tool in the toolbox that we're using right now, and I hope that we can get to a point where we understand better how to work together for these difficult decisions or issues in the community that are sensitive. Because I think everyone up here, the common thread is that we care about the community and we want to make good decisions. But that does require information, that does require working with a lot of different bodies and, and outside agencies. So I do hope that we can come up with additional processes and procedures or understand how we can use our current ones to make sure that we feel comfortable moving forward with those decisions. Some of those tools could be planning studies because those include more broad public engagement. We could have advisory boards that could bring information to us to help enhance our understanding of not only these issues but other major issues, so that we have a better idea for the town's issues, that the wants and needs of our community, so that we can make better decisions in the future. I personally think these ordinances are a bit of a mix-up. I, I think that even though I understand that as a body, I don't believe we would pass anything related to light rail. I think that's been mostly misinformation, that it seems odd for us to pass an ordinance to talk about that when it wasn't the original subject that we're talking about, because I, I don't want to give a false sense of security in case there's still that miscommunication about commuter rail versus light rail. For commuter rail, my position is still trying to keep options open, and it's not because I support it one way or the other, but I just don't want to tie our hands. And I do feel that the council currently has the power to review each step of the way and provide direction if any future studies or issues come up. All of it is a big if right now. I don't think anything's on the table, and I, and I don't believe that this council will see anything for a while in this area, but I know that with the new council, it has been good to discuss these issues and make sure that we can talk as a group and be transparent. But I do think that as councilmembers and this board right now, we just need to understand the processes, procedures, and tools that we have to move forward with this and any issue. And I do think that we're moving in the right direction, but personally, I don't think the ordinances are, are, are the right tool in this case. Thank you.
If I could address that for a second. The, the ability to be held accountable, let's say the, whatever the last study was that was brought up, yes, the council was brought up before that council. It could be brought for, under the current council, under 15B. But expenses that are below that threshold would be restricted. If, I don't believe there's any restraint under a certain amount for directors to spend on things like, I don't know, a survey, which can always be couched to get the answer you wish. There's, this allows our town to be at the table for the discussions and the normal day-in and day-out process that staff would use, but it would not allow it to be invested in without our express consent and, and to be held accountable. And if that means it's an extra couple agenda items a year to be held accountable for a $10,000 survey, so be it. But at least then, people don't feel it's being done behind their back. And when you have, there's a term that's used, and it was used, and how this was caught, was a term called wildly important goals, and it was stuck into the, the budget and fared it out, and it regarded money spent for looking at commuter and the commuter rail specifically. And the problem is, is when you look that up, I, I forget the professor's name, but it was something I remembered in college, and I looked it up, and there it is. It's some, it's a, a method to keep something on the table, even when everybody else at the table is against it. You use, your wildly important goal is put on the side of the table until it's time to just throw it down, throw down the gauntlet and get it done. And it was done by a socialist professor from Harvard, as I recall. And when I had somebody look up the, they couldn't even get to the total. I think my email said that that term was used 128,000 times in Gilbert emails? 128,000? I, I, it could be. I, I, it could be, maybe I'm missing a comma somewhere, but it's used enough that it's concerning. And my sole goal in doing this is complete accountability to the people in this town. There is nothing that will happen regarding something that they're all concerned about without this council being 100% accountable for it. Heck, I, I could even possibly vote for it if it was something that made sense. But even if I'm the loser on something in the future, everybody can sit there and be held accountable. I've already been called horrible things for being against it, let alone defending most of the people that want this not to happen. So this is all about transparency, accountability. It will not, the fact that it comes in front of us, we're not breaking a development agreement technically at all because we're considering it. We don't break it until we break it. And this allows us to consider that. Is it worth breaking something to do this? Is it not? Are we stopping it? And as, as it was said, Amtrak, yeah, if they, if they turn around and they, they wanted to pay for something to, or just drive through Gilbert, just take the train through Gilbert, we can't stop them from using their rails. But we most certainly don't need to promote it and promote it in the middle of this town. And I challenge you to go on MetroLink in Glendale, California, my hometown, and tell me that's a comfortable, decent place you want to be. It's an Amtrak function. It's commuter rail and it's dangerous. And I don't think we need to go over light rail again because I think anybody that wants to sit there and take the light rail on a daily basis is a thrill seeker. It's silly. It's dangerous. So my sole point was for us to be completely 100% transparent and accountable to everybody in this town.
Councilmember Anderson?
I heard tonight someone who came up to the podium and said we thought that we had killed this whole idea of a light rail a long time ago. I thought that too. Several months ago, I thought we killed it and it just keeps coming back. And I hope tonight, we kill it so that it never comes up again because light rail is not intended to be in Gilbert. I don't know how we make that message more clear. Now, on the commuter rail, you've already heard tonight that there's not a whole lot that we can do about commuter rail if the private entity that the mayor's talking about decides to use those rail lines. What will be bad policy on the part of this council going forward is doing what happened in this town about 35 years ago, which some of you may remember and some of you probably don't remember. But we, Gilbert went all the way to the freeway, freeway frontage on the 60, all along the 60 alignment for many years. And at some point in time, Gilbert sat down and negotiated away our frontage on the 60. That was bad policy. That was short-sighted. And I don't want to be short-sighted about the commuter rail. We certainly can if Amtrak decides to run a line from Tucson through Phoenix and over to the west side. We can wave as it goes by in Gilbert. That is bad policy and will be criticized in the future by future residents because we didn't take the opportunity to at least study whether or not we wanted to benefit economically from having that line come through Gilbert. We'll all regret that in the future. And so I'm, I'm all for killing this whole idea of about a light rail, commuter rail. I still want that ability to do more than just sit down and be at the table. I want to be able to know what our options may be in the future. And we can only find that out through studies. And we should be able to, we don't want to spend any money on the, on the line itself, on bringing Amtrak in. We won't spend any money doing that. But we should spend money to know whether or not we can benefit from it coming through the town.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Oh, I have a few mics on. Councilmember Bonjivani?
Yep. Chris, maybe you can make sure that we're not confused because people get confused all the time about light rail and commuter rail. So from what Councilmember Anderson said, if he wants to kill light rail, is it correct by saying, voting no for 15, yes for 15A, and yes for 15B? Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Bonjivani, I think it's best to speak to 15A. That's the one that deals directly with the light rail. So if this ordinance has proposed would pass, it would mean that the town would be prohibited from spending or using any resources for light rail, for the furtherance of light rail in Gilbert. And the resources include spending money, accounts, credit facilities, personnel, equipment, and the like.
So as far as process goes, if we vote on 15 and it goes 4-3 to pass and we vote yes on 15A, what happens since they're biologically, bi, no, biological? They're totally different. Thank you. They're totally different. One is, 15A is saying, you know, light rail's in there and then 15, I'm sorry, 15 says light rail's in there, 15A says light rail's not in there. Am I correct? Yes. Because it's, there's and in there.
Yeah, so the, the two ordinances are very different. So as I mentioned, 15A talks about a prohibition on spending any money or doing anything to further light rail in Gilbert, within the jurisdictional boundaries of Gilbert. It would not prohibit, you know, town staff or town officials from participating in planning bodies. It also would prohibit, this is again 15A, assessing a tax or fee for purposes of, you know, aiding in the design, plan, and construction, operation, or maintenance of light rail within the town. 15, what 15 would do is it would prohibit the town from assessing a new fee for purpose of light rail or commuter rail within the jurisdiction of the town. And it would also prohibit the town from assessing a new tax for either commuter rail or light rail without first going to referendum, without first going to the voters.
Okay, so if we want to say no to light rail, 15 with that or in there doesn't do that. Am I correct?
What 15 would do with regard to light rail, it would prohibit the town from assessing any new tax for light rail or assessing, sorry, any new fee for light rail at all. And then would prohibit any new tax without going for a referendum with light rail. That's what it would do.
Okay, so that kind of, that's kind of like complaining about your, your electric bill but leaving your window open. So we would basically, if we want to say no to light rail, it's not going to happen here, then we would have to vote no for 15. Am I correct?
I, I don't know, Councilmember Bonjivani, if I can answer that. I think that's a question for the policymakers. I can explain what the ordinances do. But as far as whether it would close out light rail, I think that's for the policymakers to decide. But, but again, 15 would say no new tax, no new fee for light rail. It wouldn't prohibit the spending of money for studies or anything like that with regard to either light rail or commuter rail. 15A, which is the light rail prohibition, would prohibit everything with regard to light rail.
But it doesn't close the door on light rail?
15?
Yes.
It would allow the town to spend money. The only thing it would do is prohibit new taxes or new fees with regard to light rail or commuter rail.
Okay. Thank you.
Actually, to take that, no new, no new taxes or fees, but current taxes could be used under that, under 15, correct?
Councilmember Torgerson, yes. It just says the town shall not assess a new tax without referendum or a new fee.
Right, so it doesn't restrict spending on it. So if we took, let's say we had just a great sales tax going on, we could ostensibly invest in that without, under 15. It could just, wouldn't involve new fees, voter input, anything. We could continue to move forward and spend money regardless. Correct?
So again, this ordinance would just say no new, no new fees or no new taxes without referendum?
But no limit on the spending.
It doesn't talk about spending. It just says no new fees.
15B, though, says that spending beyond the, some time of staff participating, any spending can be possible if brought in front of the council, correct? 15B.
It doesn't allow feasibility studies.
So 15B, Councilmember Torgerson would say, and let me get to this. It says the town shall, and this is subsection B of 15B. The town shall not expend monies for the furtherance of commuter rail located within the jurisdiction of the town, including but not limited to money for, to conduct studies to design, construct, maintain stations or facilities supporting commuter rail or include commuter rail in any town transportation plan.
But what about subsection E of that, of 15B?
Of 15B, there's no subsection E. It's only in, it's only in 15A.
Okay, at 15B, it was, there's supposed to be something in there that brings up, if voted on by the current council, there, John was supposed to put that in there.
Okay. That, that language is in 15A, I know. There's a subsection E that talks about that. And then what that says is no further expenses other than those permitted by this article shall, shall be incurred by or on behalf of town, the town, without express council approval.
That's supposed to be in 15B.
I can solve that for you, though, very easily, Councilmember. Nothing can be spent without coming to the council for a vote at any time.
So staff has absolutely no say over whether their budget goes?
No, no. They have say where their budget goes, but they cannot do a feasibility study or a contract without coming to the council.
For how much money? What is their budget limit on that? Because I see things that are spent.
Patrick's the only one that has a budget limit that he can spend up to a certain amount without having to come to the council. I don't think anybody else has a limit as to, every item that is going to have to be approved has, has to be approved by this body. Whether it be a feasibility study, a contract, a road widening, whatever the CIP project is, it's either in our budget and outlined in the budget so that you know what that is, or it comes to this council and you approve the budget, the seven of us approve the budget. So everything that is spent comes to this council. And I think that's what Councilmember Kaprowski was trying to say a couple of minutes ago.
Mayor, would you, would you consider taking light rail off of 15 and therefore we could eliminate 15B totally?
I would, I would be all for eliminating 15B because there's too many pieces to it that I just cannot vote for.
But would you take light rail off of 15?
I don't think I need to take light rail off of mine. I think I can add an amendment to mine and I already have it written. That would be very simple. The town shall not expend monies for construction, maintenance, or repair of commuter or light rail located within the jurisdiction of the town. That's construction, maintenance, or repair.
Yeah, but it still keeps it open.
How does that keep it open? You're not allowed to spend any money on anything.
Well, the word or keeps it open. I mean, if we, if we want to kill it, we need to kill it. We can't keep it on life support as an or.
I don't see how or keeps it open. But I would not vote for 15B. I know that Councilmember Kaprowski also had another comment. And Councilmember, I mean, sorry, Vice Mayor hasn't said anything, so we would need to let her have a chance.
So I wanted to follow up after Councilmember Torgerson made some comments. I think what I heard from you is you have a concern over items not coming to the council because they might be under a certain threshold. And so I wanted to ask staff, the town manager or town attorney, I believe that amount might be $100,000. But is there a different process where this body could give direction to staff that for commuter rail and, or any, I guess, transit options, that those options would come to staff at, at any cost level versus following that one specific policy? Or, or is the ordinance required in order for that to take effect?
Mayor, Councilmember Kaprowski, so I'm going to try to recap what you said and answer your question. Regarding expenditure, expenditure authority, I have the authority to authorize expenditures up to $50,000 for contingency uses. So things that either we've, an unanticipated expense or something that needs to be dealt with within the fiscal year that was not part of the approved budget as part of the fiscal year. And then when it comes to capital projects, they have spending authority up to $100,000 tied to those projects. And any of that would also flow through to the reports to the council in the quarterly reports. So if the desire was to restrict spending on a specific type of work or study, council would need to take some kind of action to restrict that.
Vice Mayor, would you like to?
Thank you, Mayor. Quickly before I begin, Patrick, I believe that could be done through our financial policies, which would outline the procedure to spend money, I think, in certain areas. So something to think about. I don't know if that's close enough. So a lot of conversation up here this evening and I don't want to go into the difference between our, our ability regarding light rail or commuter rail. Mayor, I think you, you covered that well. But what I'm opposed to is bringing multiple ordinances back and forth to this dais without a working group, without us sitting down and really talking about what can we agree on and what we can't agree on. And I think that we're, we're talking, which is good, and we're having a conversation. We're trying to find out where we all are in order to put some type of policy in place. But to continue it in the form that we're doing is insane. It is definitely insane. And I think it is because, one, it continues to upset our residents and they're very unnerved and I don't blame them because we're having conversations about something that's not even happening today. And so that, I think, is misleading. It, when we are trying to govern in such a way that is very transparent and understandable to people, the way the conversation is going looks like those of us who are trying to make good policy and do it in the way that it should be done, all of a sudden are the supporters of light rail and commuter rail. And we're not. It's not true. We're just trying to figure out the best process in order to have meaningful conversations with our, with our community. It also represents that this council has no intention of working together to find solutions. So when you keep signing things to bring things up here and nobody gets to talk about them except for in a format that looks like we're a divided council, that's the, that's what people see out there. Now, I know very clearly, I've had conversations with you in our orientation, we all said we want to work together. This is not doing that. It's embarrassing. I'm embarrassed. And I want us to sit down and find solutions together, not in this format that is just causing distress and unrest within our community. That is not fair to the, all of our citizens. So as I'm sitting up here, I'm thinking, okay, what are we agreeing on? We're agreeing that, I'm assuming we're agreeing, that we don't want to spend any new fees to fund the commuter rail line or bring a light rail to Gilbert. I think that's what we're agreeing on. We don't want any new tax to come forward unless the people of Gilbert said they wanted it. I think that's pretty standard in, in most cases, whether it's light ri, light rail or their commuter rail. I thought that we all agreed, we want the ability to participate and have regional conversations that deal with these transportation issues. We want to see it at the table. We want to understand what could be coming from our neighbors that could impact our community. So if I'm understanding, we all agree on that. What we don't appear to agree on is the ability of us to use town resources to do studies, to actually go out and get the information we need, have community conversations, and bring that all back to us. I'm not sure why we don't agree with it, but it appears we don't. So that's an area that we need to be working on and figure out what we can come up with. To me, what's negotiable is allowing us to have these community conversations about a regional, I'm going to just get right to the commuter rail. This is a regional issue that could impact our community, one way or another. And for us to blanketly say we are not going to study anything that has to do with light rail is irresponsible. That doesn't mean we're going to have a station. It doesn't mean anything. It means we're going to understand that if a commuter rail line goes through our community, we are going to understand what that means. And yes, when you do a study, it's going to cost money. And we should have the ability to do that. To take that away, it's not big picture. It's not looking at the future. We're only looking at today. And I, I just don't think that's the way we should be doing business. We were charged and we were elected to look at this community into the future and what could impact us. And I would recommend that we stop this with these ordinances back and forth. We, we get together and we figure out what it is we want to do in a different format and then we bring something back. This, I, I just can't even believe that we've been having this conversation since last summer and nobody has talked one time about bringing light rail to this community. Nobody's even asking us. And this commuter rail... And this commuter rail, I'll be lucky if my grandkids are still around, if it ever happens. And so I, I just don't like the fact that we're bringing up and we're creating an environment that doesn't need to be there. So I believe there's other avenues. Ordinances aren't the way to do this. We have a master transportation plan. We could take a look at that, see if there's some language we put in there that clearly states that any of these conversations could come back. I don't care. It could be a financial policy. But this ordinances don't do it. And I don't, I, I don't like seeing this, the way this is happening. And it doesn't allow you three to talk to any of us, to get any input from us. And I'm hoping that, that nobody talked to anybody else after the three of you made the decision to come, or Mayor, that you made the decision to come. I just, this is, this isn't the way we do business, and it shouldn't be.
Vice Mayor, that's exactly what I said two weeks ago, and I offered to continue the last discussion and bring it forward for a study session or something. And we were forced to a vote on that night. So I decided to take the bull by the horns and created an ordinance that I thought would protect the community, answer the questions, and end the discussion. I am not for continuing this off another night at this point. We don't meet again until April, and we have this hanging over our heads. And we are, I think we just need to figure out, I'll make a motion for the ordinance that I submitted. I will move to approve item 15, and I will add an amendment. The town shall not expend monies for construction, maintenance, or repair of commuter and/or light rail located within the jurisdiction of the town. Can I get a second on that ordinance?
Can I comment?
I'd like to discuss something. I'd like to say something.
I have a, I have a motion on the floor.
Well, you didn't give me the opportunity to respond to...
No, I may.
To her comments.
But I still do have a motion on the floor. I still have a motion on the floor. Would anyone like to second that motion? If not, then it'll just die. And then we can go back to conversation. Councilmember Buckley?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say that I will never be embarrassed for representing the people that elected me. I am not embarrassed by this. I, the, the residents of Gilbert do not want light rail, commuter rail. And it has come, and it's gone, and it's back, and none of us want that to happen. That's why we have 15A and 15B, to hopefully put a stop to this. But I will never be embarrassed for representing the people that elected me. And I'm embarrassed that you said that, that you actually, and, and I'm sorry to say that. I mean, this is here, and we'll go off and, and hopefully still be friends. But I, this is something the community does not want, and we need to show them that we are going to represent them. And by continuing to say, well, we, and I, and I understand that we want something on the table, but the, right now, we're, we're supposedly the city of the future. We're looking to our future. And it seems like three of us are, are looking to the future of making sure and ensuring the town of Gilbert does not have commuter rail. And then the rest of us want to be able to have it. And, and that's fine, but we all have a vote, and I will never be embarrassed by, by my vote.
May, oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Maybe I'm the council member that doesn't know if the lights are on or off, but, you know, yes. You know, Councilmember Torgason, and Councilmember Buckley, and myself are new. We're still learning the process. And I'm very happy during, during the week, Vice Mayor Tilke called me up and said, Chuck, you know, you could have done it this way. And I appreciated that discussion. We could have done it in a study session or various other actions. But Mayor, you the one, you, you brought this on the agenda today. We had to put our ordinances on the agenda to defend ourselves. Now, I would think, if you mentioned last week, we should have come to a study session or something else, that you would have done that. So I was shocked, and you were disappointed that I called the vote. I'm disappointed that we even see this on the agenda today without having that discussion that you recommended to us. So the three of us, you know, not knowing exactly all the processes, had to come up with, you know, what we felt were, were representing the, the citizens of Gilbert by saying, let's kill light rail. So I would have rather gone your direction that you said, and let's all talk. But we weren't given that opportunity because you put it on the agenda today. So it kind of feels like, you know, mama bear who just scolded her three little cubs, you know? I, that's just how I feel. I'm sorry.
I put it on the agenda because you did take it to a vote and didn't give us an opportunity to bring the ordinance forward. That's why I put it on an agenda. Had we not voted that Tuesday night, we would have brought it forward to a study session so that we could discuss it.
Why couldn't we still do that?
That's what I would have wanted to do.
Why couldn't we still do that? Before you put it on the agenda, could we have still done that? Could we have gone to a study session?
Sure.
Okay.
But I already knew that you were working on ordinances to bring forward.
But it wasn't handed in until we saw your, your ordinance on there.
But I didn't know that, because I can't talk to you guys. So, you know, again, the public sees that we cannot speak to each other, and because the three that were working on the ordinances were talking to each other, they couldn't talk to the rest of us. This is open meeting law. This is state of Arizona laws that we have to live up to all the time. So we don't have an opportunity to discuss these items. So we come up here, and this is our opportunity to discuss them.
But couldn't we have had a study session together?
Yes, and that's what I asked for last time, before we voted.
Well, I, I, I don't call that.
Neither here nor there at this time. I went back and rewatched the meeting today. But we need to make a decision at this point in time. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Oh, thanks. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Buckley? My comment was I, I was embarrassed by the process that we're using, not by any of us standing up and talking about what we believe. So I hope that you understand that that wasn't what I meant. But I would like to see the ability. I think there are other ways of going about this without it being an ordinance, the way that these are written. So if we, we need a study session, if we need to ask for some clarity from our, our town staff, I would appreciate that.
Yes.
Chris, that subsection E that I spoke about, could you address that?
Councilmember Torgason, so that subsection E that you talked about, it's in 15A. And what it says is no further expenses other than those permitted by this article shall be incurred or on behalf of the town without express council approval.
So that, that was meant for B? That was meant for B, so that we would have the option to hear that, so that staff wasn't empowered to make an expense, as you had pointed out, Young. But that was something that we could clearly vote on, and if four people said, hey, this is worth spending $200,000 for a study, we could, but it would definitely be there. If it was worth spending $20,000, 10, 5. But we would at least be held accountable. It was giving us the option. That subsection was giving us the option. I'm sorry that it got put on A because A was not meant to have that option. B was meant to have that option. And if you look at B with that on there, and if, if we could consider it that way, it gives us the option to hear that and be presented that and vote for it. And quite seriously, may pass it, not pass it, whatever, but it would, it would add that level of accountability that these people want. And that's all it is. It doesn't say you can't do it. It says it can't be done without our express consent, is what it says.
And that was my understanding, too, that that was going to be in there. I don't know how it ended up in 15, but my, I, I thought it was going to be in 15B, which would give us the option to talk about commuter rail, separate 15A to say we're done with light rail. That's how I thought it was supposed to be set up, if we could add it to that. It's kind of like merging 15 with 15B in some way. But again, I think it comes back to, I think almost everyone up here said, no light rail. So let's, let's kill it.
There are still too many items in 15B that I'm not comfortable with. Too many, way too many items that I'm not comfortable with. And it really does say that you cannot conduct a feasibility study. And so...
Without, without council approval.
But it doesn't say that the way that it's written here in the packet. And that's what I'm stating. It doesn't say that the way that it's written here in the packet. It also omits discussing commuter rail as part of our transportation plan. That is just poor planning and irresponsible and not transparent to our residents, to not discuss that commuter rail could be coming through this community so that our residents know that it could be coming through this community. That's irresponsible. So I would not vote for 15B. There's just too many items. That's just a couple that I saw right off the bat. So I would not do that. Do we want to? Councilmember Anderson?
I don't know that I'm ready to vote on any of these. I would rather remove these and go back. I told you what my goal was. Kill light rail, leave the door open to study a multimodal station, which will have several modes of transportation that will use it, not just commuter rail. That door should be left open so we aren't doing irresponsible planning, and it's that simple. And I, we're just making it more complicated, it seems to me.
Councilman Anderson, that's, that's what we originally thought we were doing, but E didn't end up in there. That's exactly what we were, our goal was, was to do that.
But if E, E had ended up in 15B anyway, there's too many parts of 15B that just don't work. That I would not be comfortable with still. I think if you voted on 15 and 15A right now, you would accomplish everything that you wanted to. But it's two ordinances. It's overregulation. It's overgovern, governing. I don't like putting two ordinances out to do the same thing. I would prefer to see one come back that covers everything but eliminates all of the things in 15B that are wrong with it. I will not support 15B.
So we took off light rail in 15. Would I do it?
Why? Why would you take off light rail? It still says no assessed fee or tax for either one.
To shut the door.
No, no, you would keep the door open on light rail.
And he's saying, that's what I thought. I thought that if you leave it in...
You don't try to say here, yeah.
I know what you're trying to say. Okay, listen. I, I, you know, I am, I am the, the troublemaker here. I'm the guy that's pushing this. In the interest of trying to make this work, you know, either we can consider adding E, which it's supposed to be in 15B, that subsection, which allows us to, to be held accountable. 15A, it, E shouldn't be in 15A. I think everybody kind of agrees that's not there. But 15B, if we bring that subsection over, should accomplish the goal that we're all transparent. Now, I know there's things that you don't like in it, but overall, that allows us to be in, to vote for expenses on that. So there's nothing that's done without express consent. And that's, I want the, I want to be accountable to these people 100%. When people are yelling at me, I want to be guilty of what they're yelling at me about. I don't want it to be that somebody else just kind of got it through.
Can I make a motion? I would like to make a motion that we can actually have a study session together with all of us so we can resolve this. I know you want it resolved tonight, but I don't think that's going to happen. And so I'd like to make a motion that we have a study session with all of us together and work this out.
I'll second that.
Do we make motions to have study sessions? That's not typical process. I know what you're saying, too. It's just that...
Okay, well, all right. So, okay, make a motion to table, to table this so that we can all get together, or just make a motion to table this until the, whatever date.
It would have to be a motion to table all three items on the agenda this evening and you, to a date not listed, right? That's what we table is, to a date not known.
Mayor, council, yes. Table's the right motion if it's to a date unknown. So you would move to table these three ordinances. And then in the meantime, you could request to have a study session. Either the mayor or the town manager or three council members can make a request to have, you know, a study session on this topic.
Okay.
May I suggest an amendment?
We have, we don't really have an official motion at the mo, we have a, we have a motion for a study session that isn't really a motion.
Right, well, I'm going to redo that motion. I'm going to make a motion to table 15, 15A, and 15B.
Do we have a second?
I'm trying to do the math here for a second.
Pardon, pardon me.
If, if, if I want to keep, if I want to table 15 and 15B and keep 15A, is that an amendment to hers, or what is that? How's that work? It's like algebra.
You could let, yeah, you could let her motion die by not making a second and make your own motion is probably the easiest. So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
So, excuse me, Mayor. Thank you. Procedurally, now that there's a second, yes, Councilmember Bon Giovanni, you could then move to amend the motion that's now on the table.
Now, you can amend the motion that was made to table 15, 15A, and 15B. And I think Councilmember Kaprowski had something, too.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman.
My suggestion to amend tabling item 15, 15A, 15B was to also add that we provide direction to come back to council if any expenses are incurred related to commuter rail or light rail. Or something to that effect. That that come to council, or that that, like, those limits be adjusted.
Okay. I, I see what you're saying. If we're going to table it and move it to a study session, maybe just bring that with you?
I think I was trying to avoid the study session, but if we want to come to a study session.
I feel like we're playing poker.
So we're table, so we have a motion to table with an amendment to include all expenses, all expenses have to be brought to the council.
I'll drop my amendment.
Excuse me? You'll drop your amendment? Okay, thank you. Then I don't have to repeat it. So I have a motion and a second. Councilmember Bon Giovanni, do you have an amendment?
Yeah, I see your motion, raise it, too. No.
You're the jokester, by the way.
I'm the jokester, by the way. I, I'd like to see 15A stand, because it sounds like we are in agreement with 15A, but we're not in agreement with commuter rail.
So you would like to remove 15A from the motion to table 15, 15A, and 15B? That's your amendment?
Help me, Chris. Call a friend.
So, yes, Councilmember Bon Giovanni, that, that's correct. And if that's your intent, just, just move to amend the motion to exclude 15A.
Okay.
Now, we would need to vote on the amendment, correct?
Correct. So he would have to, Councilmember Bon Giovanni, if you want to make that motion, make that motion, then we'll need a second. And if there's a second, then we vote on the amended motion.
Does Councilman Bon Giovanni have a second to amend the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so on our amended motion to remove 15A from the tabled 15, 15A, and 15B, we need to vote. So you're only voting on whether or not to remove 15A from the tabled motion of 15, 15A, and 15B. Please vote.
Chris, quick question. Chris?
Uh-oh, we had an abstention.
A, a yes vote on this means we're separating it, correct? Okay, thank you.
So a yes vote on the amendment means that 15A has pulled, been pulled out of the tabled motion. So now we have a motion to table 15 and 15B with a second.
That's correct.
I'm on it tonight.
We go back to the original motion as amended.
Yes, the original motion as amended.
Which is tabling 15 and fif, 15 and 15B.
Yes. So we have a motion to table 15, 15 and 15B. Passes 7-0. The first vote passed 4-2-1. So it was four yes, two no, and one abstention. So 15A was removed. Now, Councilmember Bon Giovanni, would you like to do something? So fifteen A was removed. Now, Councilmember Bon Giovanni, would you like to do something with fifteen A?
Yeah, I'd like to call a vote on fifteen A.
You need to make a motion, not call a vote.
I'll make a motion on fifteen A. Approve, approve.
You make a motion to what?
To approve fifteen A.
Would you read the language of that?
I can. I have it right up in front of me. It is, well, it's quite long. "Prohibition of utilization of town resources for purposes of this article. Light rail shall mean an electrified rail service that operates in urban environments in completely exclusive rights-of-way in exclusive lanes of roadways and in some cases in mixed traffic. For purposes of this article, the term light rail also includes stationed maintenance or repair facilities, operations centers, office buildings and parking facilities relating to or supporting light rail. The town shall not spend or use its resources, including the use or expenditure of monies, accounts, credit facilities, vehicles, personnel, equipment, buildings or any other thing of value of the town for the furtherance of light rail located within the jurisdiction of the town, including but not limited to feasibility studies, stations, designs, inclusion in any town transportation plans or any other items peripherally contributing to the furtherance of light rail. The town shall not assess a new tax or fee for this purpose, for the purposes of or in aid of the design, planning, construction, operation or maintenance of light rail within this jurisdiction of the town. This section shall not be construed as a prohibition of participation by the town, its employees or its officials in state, regional or local planning bodies, committees or boards that address or conduct business pertaining to light rail. No further expenses other than those permitted by this article shall be incurred by or on behalf of the town without express council approval," which we've heard they didn't want that section in there, E. So we have a motion by Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
I'll second that.
You need to use your mic, please.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a second by Councilmember Torgeson. Please vote. Motion passes five, one, one, with five yes, one no, and one abstain. The reason I voted against it is I would prefer to do this all in one ordinance and not do this in three. I preferred to table all three and work on one final decision altogether to make it easier for all of us to track into the future, for residents to know where to look when they're looking for information on this, to make it easier for our legal staff to have one ordinance in place and not two or three so that we know exactly what we're doing. I think it gets more difficult when you try to pass more ordinances to do the same exact job. Councilmember Anderson?
Uh, I think you're, you're in the right direction there, but I want to say RIP to light rail. Please pass that on.
Light rail never existed to begin with. It was a created topic for last year. It has never existed in Gilbert, and so now it's dead even though it never lived. I don't know what more to say about that. We will move on to our next item on the agenda. I've lost track of where-
Mayor, if I can just jump in, just want to bring something to the council's attention for future, uh, future council meetings. Um, we have a, a council has a policy, um, the policy on, I think it's the one dealing with, um, council decorum, but anyway, it talks about abstentions for councils and that council should not abstain from voting except in cases where there's a conflict. Just want to bring that up to the council. There were two different abstentions just now. It did change the results, but just want to bring that up to the council. You should, you should not abstain unless there's a conflict of interest.
Thank you. Um, I think it's the first time I've seen abstentions on the dais since I've been sitting here. So thank you for covering that, Chris. And you're right, it would not have changed the outcome of the vote, but it isn't a practice that we should get into. We are up here to represent the people and to make a decision one way or the other. So now we will move on to item sixteen, which is the LDC text amendment, the LDC text amendment Z twenty-two dash eighteen, "Conduct hearing and consider adoption of an ordinance amending the Town of Gilbert Land Development Code." I won't read the whole title. Vice Mayor would like a short presentation on this, and I see Ava Cutro coming to the podium. Thank you, Ava. Open the public hearing. Thank you, Ava.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, um, the only presentation I needed was we made a change on the graphic and we, um, well, you made a change on the graphic that we, we discussed on, um, so we were thinking if you could just show that. And then if there was any questions, you could go into more detail.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As noted tonight, it's an amendment to this land development code, which is a town zoning ordinance regarding adding additional criteria and more descriptive language. This will help staff determine front yards on individual lots. Part of that amendment, there is a graphic that's currently in our code, and that's what's before you on the screen. The named lots, flag lot, interior corner, you could see they have corresponding numbers next to them designating front, sides and rear yards. The irregular lot does not. Vice Mayor Tilke brought this to staff's attention and that it, people could perceive that as being an unintentional error or an omission. It is not. The very last paragraph on this graphic states that if you believe you have an irregular lot, to contact the planning department for the setback determination. So in order to tie that language to the interior lot, we've added an asterisk on the interior lot and one next to that language. So anybody who has an inter, an irregular lot and is looking for their frontage will see that they are supposed to contact the planning department.
To follow up with that, Ava?
Yes.
Where would the front setback be for that irregular lot that we have depicted here?
For this one depicted right here, the front would probably be where that asterisk is, where it borders the street. But not all irregular lots are in this configuration. Directly across from that, between the flag lot and the interior lot is another irregular lot, and that one, it's not as obvious where the front is. Also, when you look at the irregular lot with the asterisk, it's not clear where the rear would be. There, if the front was what adjoins the street, you may have two rear lots. You may have one rear lot depending on the configuration of the other lots. So rather than putting the numbers on that lot, since there are so many different configurations for an irregular lot, we just want to draw attention to the language that that, each is looked on as a per-lot basis. And there's not a typical irregular lot.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Ava? Vice, um, Councilmember Kaprowski?
Ava, could you go over the language changes? I just want to make sure that in that, with this change with the irregular lot, that our text cha, changes within the code. Um, I believe there were some changes related to where the front door was facing and that additions would be consistent with and look like the same building. Could you go over that a bit, please?
Certainly, Mayor, Councilmember Kaprowski. When determining the front of a lot, these are the additional criteria. For an interior lot, it would stay the same. And the majority of lots in the town are interior lots. They're rectangular in shape and only have one side that joins a road. That would be your front. But for lots with multiple or double frontage, we would base it on the majority of the four criteria listed here. The front door, what's depicted on a subdivision plat, what's consistent in harmony with the other lots surrounding it, and which street has the lower level in the town's street classification system. Not all four would apply to every lot, so we would look at the majority of those to help us determine the front yard. And particularly two and three, because when you use two and three, you're not looking at the lot by itself. You're looking at how it is in the subdivision and how it coexists with the other lots.
With the language presented here, um, in that second bullet, for a lot with double or mon, or multiple frontages, would you say that that includes or is inclusive of all other lots that were on that diagram except for interior lots?
And some of the irregular lots, because the irregular lot may only have one frontage, but it might have multiple sides or multiple rears.
Do we need to add that language of the irregular lots in there to just tie the, the text of the diagram together?
I'm just looking at the other language that we have here. Whoops, there we go. Um, "We believe staff did that that was covered with the asterisk language." Again, since irregular lots could have so many configurations, not to have more or less a blanket statement about them, but to contact the planning department and we'll look at each individually.
Any other comments or questions for Ava? Thank you, Ava. We don't have any slips to ask to speak on this item, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais. Anyone like to make a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item number sixteen.
Motion by Vice Mayor. Any seconds?
Second, ma'am.
Second by Councilmember Torgeson. Please vote. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Thank you to the team for working on that item, getting it through Planning Commission and bringing it to us here at the council. Next, we have already handled our boards and commissions issue. So now we're on to boards, commissions and committees. Any reports from council liaisons? Seeing none, we have comments from town manager?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Nothing. Okay. How about report from council on current events?
Blood drive tomorrow, correct?
Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday. Yeah, I already signed up. We're ready to go. Yeah. At the, um, uh, Shakespeare Room in the library.
If you would like to register for that blood drive, you can visit vitalent.org. There were, yesterday when I looked, several appointments still available. Um, it's a Gil, Town of Gilbert Blood Drive being held at Southeast Regional Library. You may need to put in the code, location of Gilbert and, um, code. It is posted on social media and on our website if you need any further details. Um, Councilmember Kaprowski, do you want to mention the symphony?
Thank you so much. Um, the Gilbert Symphony has been renewed and is going to have their first of a series of concerts this year. It will be held this Sunday at the Higley Center for Performing Arts from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. It's free, general admission, so I hope you can all, um, attend and tell your friends and neighbors. The website, if you want more information, is gilbertsymphony.org. Um, otherwise, you can just show up at the Higley Center for Performing Arts at 3:00 PM on Sunday, March 12th. There are some sponsorships available, but we have been very fortunate that, um, several community members have stepped up to provide sufficient donations to cover the first concert. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Um, we have applications open right now. Oh, any, any other comments? Sorry, I just jumped into mine because I didn't see anybody else. Um, we have applications open for Gilbert Student Government Day. Any high school student in the Town of Gilbert, whether you go to a district school, private school, charter school or your home schools, you are welcome to apply. Gilbert Student Government Day will be held on April 12th, and the applications are open until March 15th at 6:00 PM. Please visit gilbertaz.gov forward slash S G D for Student Government Day. And I just wanted to mention that we had a wonderful weekend, two galas back-to-back, celebrating the House of Refuge on Friday night with an amazing gala. And people opened their hearts and wallets big time for House of Refuge. They are a partner with the Town of Gilbert to serve our residents. And then Saturday night, our favorite annual celebration at HD South. We all got dressed up in red and attended to participate in their annual fundraiser and something that I look forward to every year. I hope that they raised a ton of money. Now I need to recess our regular meeting, and can I get a motion to recess this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tilke and a second by Councilmember Anderson. Please vote. Motion passes seven zero. We will see you all in April. Thank you very much. We will be moving into executive session.